Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission for Thursday, March 22. If you have with you a cellphone now, it would be a great time to silence it. I think I'll do mine while I'm at it. For those of you who might be here for the first time today, how we do this, we have a little bit of housekeeping to take care of here at the beginning. And then when we get to the items requiring a separate vote, let me back up a minute. If you have something that you wish to speak to today that's on the agenda, you'll find a page like this out on the table in the hallway. If you'll fill it out and give it to our clerk, that would be very helpful. When we get to the items requiring separate vote, we'll ask the applicant to come forward, give us their name and address, tell us what it is they're asking for. The commissioners may or may not have some questions of that person. If there's anyone else who wishes to be heard, we'll ask them to come forward, state their concerns or questions, and then we may or may not have questions for them. We'll call the item for a vote. A motion will be made, and we'll vote on each item in turn. First item on the agenda is receipt of the minutes of the March 8 meeting, Planning Commission.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to receive the minutes of the March 8 meeting of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission. Do you cast your votes, please? They are received.
I did turn off.
Wait just a second. Just in the middle, not for or against, but just in the middle. There you go. Is that everybody all accounted for? Okay, great. They are received. Next item on the agenda is continuance requests.
Staff received several continuance requests. I'm going to read for the record on item B11 on your agenda for case PUD 1669, to defer that to April 26. Item B12 for case PUD 1674, defer to April 26. Item B13 for case PUD 1670, to defer to June 14. Item B14 for case PUD 1581, to defer indefinitely. And item B15 is case C6715, to defer indefinitely.
Is there anybody here today who wished to be heard on any of those items? If not, I'll take a motion.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue items 11 through 15. Do you cast your votes, please? Those items are continued.
We also received one new request for continuance for item B6 on the agenda for case PUD 1677, to defer to April 12.
Is there anyone present who wished to be heard on that item today? If not, I'll take a motion.
Move to continue the item.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue item number 6. Do you cast your votes, please? It is continued. Are there any other continuance requests? Sir, is there something that you need?
Well, I'm not the hearer.
Oh, I don't have any control over the volume, sorry.
Can I light?
Okay. I said Jeff, I meant Jared, sorry. Consent items, the consent docket, these are items that are performed, that are approved fairly regularly, without much discussion. If there's anybody who wants to be heard on item number one, however, speak now. Would you read it, please?
Yes, item number one is case PV103 to vacate a portion of the final plot of South Meadow Estates.
Is there anybody present who wished to be heard on this item? If not, I'll take a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number one. Do you cast your votes, please? Any of you is approved.
Okay, under items requiring a separate vote, item number two is case SPUD 1042 to rezone 804 Northwest 65th Street from R1 to SPUD 1042.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive here on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Clay Farha, who is also here. This is an application for an SPUD to rezone various parcels consistent with SPUD 1042 that will allow for office-type development. The Planning Commission will probably recall, we were here several months ago on other parcels, similar location to this, in which we had some meetings with Commissioner Powers, Commissioner Cravens, to fine-tune the PUD. My client now has these parcels under contract, and so what we have done is mirrored the language in the previous application to that in this application, except for if you look at the last portion of the SPUD, we do allow for the currently existing single-family residential to stay until a date specified, that being January 18, 2020, and that's Section 5.6 of the SPUD. So with that, we do agree with the technical evaluation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Is there anyone present who wishes to be heard on this item today? Commissioners? This is just bringing this property into a PUD that we, SPUD that we approved very recently, really no variation other than to permit the continued use of the residential properties for a limited time.
Move approval.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve item number two, SPUD 1042. Would you cast your votes, please? It is recommended for approval.
Thank you.
Item number three, SPUD 1044 to rezone 6120 North Drexel Boulevard from R4 to SPUD 1044.
Again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, on behalf of the applicant who is also with me here this afternoon. This is an SPUD that would allow for a childcare center at a building that is already existing. It was some form of office building, I believe, even though it's zoned R4. If you look at the building currently on Google Earth, you'll see the entirety of the lot behind the building is paved. So what you can see in this plan is, we will be removing a significant amount of the parking lot to accommodate an outdoor play area for the children. And then we still have nine parking spots in back for staff, and there are four parking spots on the side of the building for parents. They will be staggering the drop-off. The question from these types of uses is always, how are you going to accommodate traffic? We have approximately 500 lineal feet. If you see this pink line, there's a very direct path in which parents will come. We can queue approximately 24 cars in that 500 lineal feet, and so we do believe with the staggering of times in that amount of queuing space that we have adequate space to queue all the cars. Additionally, there will be two staff people assigned to be monitoring the front part so that when there is a car, they get the child, bring it in. The start time is approximately 8:15. You can start dropping your kids off at 7:45. The pickup is around 3:20. So we think we'll miss some of the peak times that otherwise might cause some traffic problems. I'm not aware of any protests. I did notice in the staff report that there was an unsolicited letter of support, so I thought I'd mention that. So no issues that we're aware of, and be happy to answer any questions.
Is there anyone present who wishes to be heard on this item? Commissioners, I did go out and look at this property. The circular drive provides for, you know, easy drop-off. The amount of parking that they have, even when a substantial portion of it is paved for playground use, will be more than enough, I think. And the flow, given the size of the building, it provides plenty of queuing space, I think, for drive-around traffic. Sir, did you wish to be heard on this item?
Oh, yes, I'm protesting against this.
Would you give us your name and address for the record, please?
The what?
Your name and address for the record.
Michael Swinney, 6109 North Drexel Boulevard, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma.
Thank you.
73112.
Thank you.
And this, they want to change their zoning, which is right across the street, directly across the street from me, at 6120 North Drexel Avenue. They knew what it was before they bought it. The residents are happy where it is. I'd hate to wake up, people dropping off their kids 6 o'clock in the morning, and it'd be like a LA traffic jam on the freeway. We can do without that. They have enough, you know, enough traffic as it is, but we don't have heavy traffic that early. And as far as I'm concerned, they can go to a strip shopping center and rent a building and open a daycare. Everybody there, you know, is already awake.
What time did you say that drop-off would be?
No earlier than 7:45.
Does that assuage your concerns at all, Mr. Swinney? Does that answer your concerns at all, drop-off begins at 7:45? Is that any help to you?
Well, that's a little better, sure, but it's going to be till midnight.
3:20 in the afternoon.
3:20. Well, I've been told two different things. I've been told 6 o'clock they open, 9 o'clock they close, you know.
Will your hours of operation be put into the SPD?
We didn't plan on it, but perhaps, but my client and the operator is here, perhaps they could visit in the hallway. We'd be happy to sit down and visit.
Would you like to do that? Would you like to pass this to the end of the docket and?
Oh, well, I meant maybe after a vote, we'd be happy to visit and talk.
I don't think that they have enough land there to build a playground, you know. That's the reason they want to zone.
So the current building is approximately 4,400 square feet. Building will remain, and we will be taking out about 5,000 square feet of paving to become a play area behind the building. Yes, sir.
Behind?
Yes. And it will be fenced.
There's only employees that can park their car in the south.
So there are nine employee parking spaces. We have eight employees. We do exceed what the code requires in terms of parking for this use unit. The parking requirements for this use unit is a function of the number of kids that you have, one per 10 kids. We'll never have 90 kids, so we're way over. Plus, we have, again, the four parking spaces for a parent drop-off if they prefer, you know, not to go in the queuing line. So we're overparked for the use.
Is that why you limited your use unit in the PUD to one?
So my client had filed this application, that's what it goes to. You know, the only other use that I would see that would be, perhaps, or probably would be some sort of administrative office-type use. It is R4 now, surrounded by R4, so certainly the intensity of what could be developed under its current zoning is significant compared to what we're going to with this.
Would that use unit have different parking requirements than what you've got presented here, nine and four?
Yeah, it'd be a function of the square footage that would be handled at a certificate of occupancy.
That's what I figured. So it's based on occupancy count of the interior.
That's right.
Yep. I don't, I mean, to me, it just seems sort of silly to have one use unit set down for a rezoning application when we're going to take something from R4 to O1. I'm not sure that it makes sense to have to come back in three years when the daycare center is not there, or whatever, and redo it to have administrative office added to an office building.
Sure, so we'd be happy to add that use. We leave it to your sound discretion.
Also, my neighbor next door is a nurse at Babus Hospital, and she said she wanted me to tell you she object to the ideal case.
Thank you.
Probably put some more on, too.
Thank you.
Okay.
What about the hours? I mean, look, I get where everybody's talking now, but clearly, there's a concern from the, at least one A resident, about operational hours, and then changing at some time in the future, et cetera. So you've got room for 24 cars there. I don't want to, I wouldn't necessarily want, in my residential neighborhood, 24-hour daycare, or late-night daycare, coming and going, et cetera. So that is, I know that there's some other offices there, but they are primarily small offices that are business-oriented administrative offices, you say, Scott, so.
Why don't we say 5 o'clock? I don't want to get into position where.
You need some time to come and go and some.
That's right. Parent emergency, are their kids still there?
Yeah, that's fine. I'm not, I didn't want it to limit it to, but I think 7 to 5. I mean, 6 wouldn't bother me, but 5's probably as good as any.
We'll take 6.
Well, I mean, these things happen. Parents get late and stuff like that, and your hours of operations are till 3:45, right?
That's right, because it said, there's an elementary school in the area, so the thought is, there's going to be some parents that are dropping kids off at the elementary, then the daycare, going to work, and picking them up, you know, again in that order. Yes. You know, the emergency happens where the parent can't get there right at 3:20.
You can't do it right till 3:45, that wouldn't work.
And just so I ask a question, you said you've got enough queuing lane for 24 cars. How many kids do you anticipate catering to at the facility?
I think they start at 30 kids. The building wouldn't allow any more than 66. And they stagger in groups the drop-off time. So when you enrolled, if we got to that high number, parents would be assigned, based upon, does that parent also have a kid at the elementary school, the different drop-off times, to ensure that there would never be a problem. So we're fine with putting the hours, but just allow some flexibility.
Let's be clear about what it is we're voting on. Are you adding a use unit?
So, sure, we'd be happy to add the administrative offices and then add a TE to add the time limitations.
And those would be what?
For the daycare.
And those would be what?
Let's say 7 to 6. Drop-off would be no earlier than 7:45, but seeing as that these individuals are dealing with kids all day, they may want to get there early and have some coffee.
I'm fine with that. I don't think that's unreasonable.
Anybody else want to be heard on this item? Sir, you have to come to the microphone.
He asked if it was affect his taxes.
I heard what he said.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that affect my taxes. I'm right across the street, you know.
Not in any way that I can imagine.
We don't give tax advice either. We don't give tax advice. That's not our job.
Thank you.
Move approval.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second.
Is that motion inclusive of the amendments?
It will be.
Okay.
Yes, it does.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number three, SPUD 1044, amended to include another use unit for administrative office and hours of operation from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM for the daycare.
Yes, ma'am.
Cast your votes, please. It is recommended for approval.
Item number four is SPUD 1045 to rezone 3301 Northwest 63rd Street from O2 and R1 to SPUD 1045.
Would you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Mark Ferris, Red Plains Professional, 2933 South Bryant Avenue. The item before you is basically a housekeeping item to clean up an old zoning that no longer exists, that would not allow for the clinic to build a simple patient drop-off, covered drop-off and pickup area, and the SPUD will allow that to occur. And we'd be glad to answer any questions. We agree with all three TEs.
We had some discussion prior to the meeting about whether the parking lot is going to be expanded to the north.
Yes, ma'am. The plan is to expand the parking lot approximately 10 feet to the north, which will require a new fence to be constructed along Northwest 64th Street.
So you'll lose those shrubs that currently provide site-proof screening on the north side?
Yes, ma'am. There is an area between the right-of-way and the proposed fence that are slightly more than four feet in width, that they'd be more than glad to landscape with some evergreen shrubs.
I like that idea. I think we'll make that part of the, we'll make that a TE. And is there anyone present who wishes to be heard on this item today? Commissioners, do you have questions, concerns?
My only question is, it just seems for, we have an O2 and R1 with a variance. You're going to put it back in the SPUD, but we're including childcare centers, dwelling units, mixed uses, lodging accommodations, and automotive parking lots as a principal use, and parking garages.
Yes.
Those seem like odd use units to be in a base.
We'd be glad to strike those.
Okay.
Funeral and interment services as well. Are we okay with that?
Yes.
Losing that one. What were they? I highlighted lodging, automotive parking lots.
Childcare centers, 8300.25, dwelling units and mixed uses, 8200.2, lodging accommodations, bed and breakfast, 8300.49, lodging accommodations, commercial lodging, 8300.51, automotive parking lots as a principal use, 8300.13, automotive parking garages, 8300.12, and then funeral and interment services undertaking, 8300.44. You're agreeable to the removal of those use units?
Yes, sir.
I do have one other question. Your sidewalk along the south side of the property, which looks to be fairly new, I couldn't quite tell whether it actually extends to your property line on the west side.
I honestly could not answer that question.
Okay.
I think you're referring to the sidewalk along 63rd Street?
Yes.
If we need to extend it to the west property line, that would be fine.
And, well, there is a space there. It's, like I said, a fairly nice new sidewalk, and then there's grass between it and the property.
Didn't they just redo that? Did they just redo that sidewalk when they redid 63rd right there?
I believe they did.
I believe they did, all the way along, well, at least at that, it covers their property, right?
Well, that's the question, whether it fully extends to their west property line.
I get it.
I would like to see it extended to the west property line if it does not, so. Okay. I've already asked, but I'll ask again. Is there anybody else who wants to be heard on this item? Commissioners? Mr. Cravens, why don't you take a shot at a motion?
Okay. I will move to recommend approval of SPUD 1045 to City Council with the amendment to the application of the removal of the specified use units and the adoption of the technical evaluation.
Including installation of new landscaping along the north property line?
Including installation of the landscaping along the north property line, as outlined by the applicant.
And extension of the sidewalk to the west property line, if necessary.
I feel like that's in three, though. Don't you think?
Do you?
Yeah.
If it's covered, that's fine with me.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number four, SPD 1045, with the additions and amendments specified. Do you cast your votes, please? It's recommended for approval.
Item number five is SPUD 1049 to rezone 800 Southwest 44th Street from C3 to SPUD 1049.
Is the applicant present? Sir? Could you give us your name and address for the record?
Thomas Scarf, 3526 Northwood Drive, Memphis, Tennessee, 38111.
And you are the applicant?
No, I'm the, I am, well, I guess we are. I'm AutoZone's real estate manager. Sorry, I was sent to the meeting in place of our pre-con group. I didn't really think that I would be presenting anything, but I'd be glad to talk on the subject, if need be.
Tell us what it is you're asking for.
Well, basically, we're, we are a retail store. As you know, you've seen AutoZone's all over Oklahoma City. We have a new concept, which is called a mega hub. It has 100,000 SKUs. It's the largest AutoZone stores that we do in the country. This will probably be around number 18 or number 20 in the nation to open, if approved. During the permitting process, which I believe we're almost done, some folks are kind of taking this as, treating it as a distribution center. It does have more parts than the average store, and it does have small commercial vehicles that go out and call on Firestone, Midas, local garages, and will also go to satellite AutoZone stores and deliver parts that are slow-moving items that you can't stick in a regular-sized store. So it's a combination of a store, commercial program, and it also does warehouse some parts, and that's, it was being treated, I guess, as a distribution center, and that's why we're in here for the special use permit. It just depends, I guess, how you read your ordinance, you know, but it sounded like you wanted to dot the i's and cross the t's, but.
Are you physically changing the building?
We were going to build a, we're taking 45,000 square feet of the former target. We're going to do a demising wall to separate us from the rest of the space. There is a storefront being added in the southwest corner of the building, because that'll be the focal point aimed towards intersection. But other than that, no, no changes.
So off of western?
Yes, we will be, we'll take the 45,000 square feet on the westernmost part of the former target.
So the only difference between this and another AutoZone is that it's bigger, significantly larger, and that you're distributing parts to essentially commercial accounts, whether that's another AutoZone store, or it's to a Midas, I think is what you mentioned.
Correct. I mean, we literally sell every part out the front door. This will end up becoming, the number-one store in Oklahoma is just south of this. This will replace it and end up being our busiest store in Oklahoma.
And the idea is, if you can't get the part at another AutoZone somewhere else, you guys have it?
People will either just come to this location, or there'll be like a small vehicle or van that will take it to another store for them.
I get that things like this have a, you know, at some point, it has to fall outside of the standard classification into some sort of a different use unit, but it sure sounds to me like this is a perfectly appropriate use for a facility of this size located where it is.
I'd like to ask staff, our staff report indicates that freestanding accessory signs shall be in accordance with the base zoning district, which in this case is C3. So what is that telling me?
They have the same signage regulations as they do today under the existing C3 zoning.
And what are they?
Depending on frontage, it could be up to 40-foot, 200-square-foot standard commercial sign.
So they can put up a pole sign, is what you're telling me? 40-foot-tall pole sign?
Yes.
Is there an existing sign?
Yes, and we're planning.
How big is it?
I'm not sure of the exact square footage. We're only taking a small portion of it because the developer's putting in a grocery store.
Subdivide.
Dollar Tree, and a few other things with us, so we're just taking the top portion of it. So maybe a third of the existing signage we would be using. There's two pole signs, one on each street.
So you don't have, you don't have any intention to put up any additional signage?
No, we're just going to utilize, I guess, our program, a share of the two existing pylon signs, and then put a standard channel letter sign over the front door.
Is there anybody else here today who wishes to be heard on this item? Commissioners?
I will move to recommend approval to City Council on SPD 1049.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number five, SPD 1049. Would you cast your votes, please? It's recommended for approval.
Thank you very much.
Item six was continued. Item seven is ABC 923 to allow ABC 2 zoning overlay of the SPD 829 District and the UCD Urban Conservation District.
Randy Malone, 209 Southwest 89, Suite F. I represent Wine Centric. They're planning to put a restaurant in the Plaza District.
And what you're seeking from us here today is an ABC 2 overlay?
Correct.
For that restaurant space, which I assume is permitted under the existing SPD?
Yes.
Is there anybody else who wishes to be heard on this item today? This, I'm sorry.
I didn't sign up for it, I wasn't looking for it.
I'll just comment for the commissioners. This is an SPD that was, has fairly recently approved at this corner, but.
Alan Christie, 1708 North McKinley, just adjacent to that. I was wondering about parking the, there was recently a big building right across the street, and there's commercial all along the bottom, and it's residential up top. And on the inside, they have parking for the residential. Outside, they have about six, seven spots. Outside, they have about six, seven spots. And there's, the stores aren't filled up yet, so I'm already worried about parking. A new place right there, across the street from that, I'm just concerned about parking. It's already kind of a harry right there, you know, it's a lot of course, because of the plaza districts right there, block away. And it, you know, more and more is going up, and it's great, but parking is not kinda, it's not coming along as fast as the buildings are, so. And there's even more building in the plaza, going on right now, so it's starting to stack up. So I just, that's the only concern I have, really.
I can understand that. If you've ever gone, anybody who's gone down to the plaza on, anytime in the evening, certainly on the weekend, it's an issue.
Yeah, it's getting worse, so just, I was, I wondered if there's gonna be any planning for more parking along with it?
Can't say that there's plans for more parking, but the plans do comply with the parking codes that exist.
Yeah, it is not part of this application to provide any additional parking.
Well, I don't have anything else today, so I was just, that was voicing concern, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Commissioners?
I would say that I heard from the neighborhood organization that, they said initially that they were against the item, but it appears that you guys worked things out with them, and last thing that I heard is that they are now in support, so.
Thank you.
And we do have a letter in support in our packets.
Right. So it sounds like they did work outside of the meeting, did all the right things. I think, you know, I think it's appropriate use, so I'm going to recommend approval to City Council.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to recommend approval, item number seven, A.B.C. nine twenty-three. Would you cast your votes, please? And it is recommended for approval.
Item number eight is A.B.C. nine twenty-four for an A.B.C. two overlay of the C-three district located at thirty-one hundred North Walker Avenue.
Again, David Box, five-twenty-two Culquor Drive. The applicants are with me here this afternoon, as well as former chairman of the planning commission, Mr. John Yogle. This is an A.B.C. two application to convert what was the Red Rooster, which was a smoke-filled beer bar, from what I'm told, to a restaurant. So the A.B.C. two would allow this to be converted to a restaurant that would be able to serve mixed drinks, as well as the beer and wine. So it's a good conversion of the space. I think it's a total improvement for the neighborhood. The Red Rooster has closed operations, so the process of gutting that space has already started. We did have a neighborhood meeting that Ms. Powers attended. I believe that the group representing the applicant outnumbered the citizens two to one, perhaps three to one. All the feedback we got was positive. It's certainly in line with the trend of this area, so another nice restaurant in this area, I think, is a, is a positive, and they are gonna keep the name Red Rooster. So with that, be happy to answer any questions.
To be fair, we sent invitations to the, to representatives from each of the four neighborhoods who bought this property, so Edgmere, Jeff Park, Paseo, and Central Park. It was not a general neighborhood meeting where we sent out, you know, notice to everybody, but it was, it was very cordial. It was really more, there were not really concerns that were expressed. It was just more of a curiosity sort of thing. I came away from it feeling like everyone there was well-satisfied with the proposal and that it would be hard to argue that it was anything but an improvement for the property, so. Is there anybody else present who wishes to be heard on this item? No commissioners?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Gary.
The application says a permit for beer and wine sales. I thought you used the word mixed drinks.
Yeah, it is an A.B.C. two, so it will permit mixed drinks, but the A.B.C. two does require fifty percent gross receipts to be that of food sales.
Is there a reason that the request does not include mixed drinks?
I think it's just an error in the staff report.
Wait a minute. Are you guys gonna have fifty, are you gonna hit your fifty percent? Is that your concern?
Yeah, it, no, it's not a concern.
Okay.
This is a restaurant.
It's a restaurant.
And we just want the ability...
As opposed to the Rooster, which was a bar?
The Rooster is a beer bar. They don't have a liquor license, so they were just beer, and I don't, I don't know any, I don't know about the food now.
I don't know.
I know it used to be a restaurant that sold food. I don't know about more recently. But yeah, there will be mixed drinks, but we will have to comply with all the state regs on percentage of food sales.
Okay. Because that was, I was curious myself. Well, I will move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number eight, A.B.C. nine twenty-four. Would you cast your votes, please? It is recommended for approval.
Thank you.
Item number nine is C-sixty-nine seventy-four, the final plat of Oakdale Gardens. This does require a variance to the subdivision regulations.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Gray with Crafts and Toll.
Take it outside, please.
Chris Gray with Crafts and Toll, three-hundred-point Parkway Boulevard. I am here to represent the applicant on this final plat before you. The preliminary plat and P.U.D. had previously been approved in the last few months. We are presenting a final plat that is in general compliance with the preliminary plat that you all have previously approved. We agree with the technical evaluations. There is a variance required. I understand it to be an administrative item that would allow us to name the streets. Since this is a P.U.D. with common area private access drives, we're asking that those be changed so that they can be named streets for emergency access, to be able to easily locate the units within the development. Be happy to answer any questions.
Is there anybody else present who wishes to be heard on this item? Commissioners, this, this item does, the final plat conforms with the subdivision regulations, preliminary plat. It would have come under consent, other than the fact that they need this variance, and so it requires that separate vote. Do you have comments, questions, concerns, or possibly a motion?
If there's no comments, I'm going to move approval of the variance for the final plat of Oakdale Gardens.
Second.
I have a motion in the second to approve the variance, item number nine. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
I will also move approval for the final plat of Oakdale Gardens.
Second.
I have a motion in the second to approve the final plat for Oakdale Gardens, C-sixty-nine seventy-four. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Item ten is S.P.U.D. one-zero-four-six to rezone thirty-three hun, thirty-three-thirty Northwest One Hundred and Twelve Terrace from P.U.D. four ninety to P.U.D. ten forty-six.
Randy Malone, two-zero-nine Southwest Eighty-Ninth Suite F in Oklahoma City, and this is Blake Bullard, the applicant.
Hi. Blake Bullard, sixty-seven twelve Northwest One Hundred and Thirty-first Street, Oklahoma City, seven-three-one-four-zero.
This is an outdoor facility. It's mainly volleyball courts and kickball leagues also.
They're downstairs, please.
And he wants, he's gonna apply for an A.B.C. two overlay for this entertainment facility, recreational facility, I should say. I didn't understand the process on this, frankly. So this is a rezoning application to rezone this P., this property on the subject site to allow for the volleyball courts or to allow for this storage, this railroad car, for lack of a better way to put it. The volleyball court's already there, okay? The railroad car is the bar. Is the bar.
It wants to serve from.
Now, is the overlay already in existence, Randy?
No.
So then you'll have to come back
Yes.
Later for the overlay.
Yes.
In the current P.U.D., it's A.B.C. one. Sorry, in the current P.U.D., it's A.B.C. one. It's, the courts have been there for thirty years, I guess. So we're just trying to keep up with the current stuff that's gonna happen in October.
We, we may actually need our staff person back with us. It's my understanding that the A.B.C. one that exists on the property covers only a small portion of it indoors.
Yeah. Well, that's what I wondered about, because clearly there's, there's some objections with respect of the outdoor activities. I mean, we have one, and I guess there's some other items.
And clearly, there's some reason why we're adding participant recreation and entertainment outdoor.
Yeah, I didn't, I frankly couldn't understand the application, so I needed some clarification. I get what you want to do
Right.
As far as procedure, I'm not saying at all that I'm in favor of it because of some of the protest letters, et cetera, so if the volleyball courts have already been there, that's...
J.J., if they, if they get this approved, will they still need to come back to us with an A.B.C. two?
No.
No, so we're doing this here today, if we're doing it, so.
I'll have to go through all the licensing, of course, but this will take, take care of their zoning to allow them to go through the licensing and get building permits.
So no A.B.C. two overlay will be done separately? That's not a thing.
Because what they're doing, I mean, they, by doing the rezoning, they're getting a eating establishment, sit-down alcohol permitted use unit applied, which is gonna apply the ability to serve alcohol across the property.
Just in that specific...
Just in the area of the S.P.U.D.
Just in the subject area.
Just in the subject site.
Okay.
And that's part of the, but, right. Okay, so the existing A.B.C. overlay is where? Is it, is, I know we've dealt with these before, and we're somewhat limited in...
It's...
Is it overlaying the whole property?
No, it's a small area interior to the larger building. A small cafe, snack bar within the building that has the ability to serve beer, and it's located there.
Okay. Yeah. And that's your east property line? Yeah, okay.
So, commissioners, I have met with Mr. Bullard onsite yesterday afternoon. He was nice enough to come meet me kind of on the spur of the moment to walk this property. I am absolutely convinced that he is, you know, doing his best to follow the rules and get where he needs to go the right way, but this property has some real problems and some real issues. There are questions with respect to, in my own mind, whether, you know, a couple of food trucks and a shipping container can constitute a sit-down restaurant, and so whether it is even, you know, applicable to an A.B.C. two, that's a question. They have been operating with the food trucks for some time, and so there are issues with neighbors, as evidenced by the protests that we received. He has met with some of the neighbors, but has not had a general meeting with the neighbors to invite their comments and concerns, and I frankly think that's a minimum necessary thing to do here. He is right up against the property line of some condominiums that are separated from this property by, in some places, an alley that's big enough to drive through, and other places, spots that you can touch the fence and the building wall. So it's very close. There are windows exposed to this facility, which has, you know, stadium lights. There are also apartments to the north of here that have, you know, open windows to this area as well. There's not any sight-proof screening across the north side of the property. There's a little bit of confusion in the staff report about whether there's access on to Northwest One Hundred and Twelve Terrace and about whether that can be controlled. Mr. Bullard indicated it really cannot be, he cannot control that. It cannot be closed off. It's kept open, and even though there are signs on it that say it's for deliveries only, it's, you know, open and available, and people drive in and out of it all the time. There, he has, he has agreed to, with the people he has met with, to some hours of operations, whether those are hours that we would consider sufficient, and whether other neighbors would think so or not. He also has agreed to keep the music at a certain level and keep those hours of operation within certain hours, but none of that is included in the S.P.U.D. that's in front of us today. It just hasn't been incorporated. So I had suggested to Mr. Bullard, as politely but strongly as I could, that I thought he should take a couple of weeks, meet with the neighbors, make whatever changes he can make to the S.P.U.D. to actually document the agreements that he has reached and perhaps will reach with neighbors about what could assuage their concerns about this before we hear it.
I'm not trying to re, well, I am. Let me rephrase that. Is there, is there a way that this, I mean, it looks like there's some open space down that's closer to Hefner and that's farther away from, maybe around where the five-five-eight is and that, I don't know what fits on the property.
That was my first thought, too, but he does not control that property. He is operating under a lease from the owners who are out of state.
And to be fair, one of the letters of protest that we receive are actually coming from the west. I mean, it's coming from the Kell Creek cul-de-sac there, so...
Right there where it says residential, Spring Hollow?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So that won't help us either.
Yeah, there are some ways in which that might be a good thing, but it's just not an option, as I understand it. It kind of is where it is or it's not. The, the food trucks currently are parking on unpaved surface, so I understand that the application in front of us includes some paved surface, so perhaps they could be moved there, but that also isn't included here, so.
You know, when I drove into that area a couple of evenings ago, it approved it. Maybe it was sort of an encampment for the panhandlers in the area. There were some tarps or pup tent-like structures under a couple of the trees. Was that just overnight happening of some sort, or just kids playing in the area, or...
I don't, I don't know. We're talking about the same property. It's locked off.
It appeared to just be panhandlers who perhaps worked that area there on One Hundred and Twenty-second.
So I think I know what you're talking about, but that's up right off of Hefner, right? So the dotted, the west, this side, the dotted line is a fence. What you could call a fence that runs all the way down the west, or the east side of the property, all the way to Hefner Road. The fence has not been replaced in a long time. That is property of the Lighthouse Ownership Group. It's an out-of-state ownership group that obviously doesn't really have a whole lot of intention to maintain the property. We took over this lease last February, and we put just a ton of our own, let's what, money into, into making this place a lot better. So it is, we've done just a tremendous amount of work just to our part. One of the, one of the letters that you have in front of you is from Mary Kay Odd. She is, she lives in those apartments right there where it says R-four, I mean, it says apartments, R-four, right behind down. She is the past president of the homeowners association there. She's the one that wrote the initial letter that has the pictures of the broken fences and whatever else that's there, and had some concerns about noise and music and some other things. We've met with her and met with Bill Wright, who is the current treasurer of the same association right there, and we've agreed to replace the fence, we already, we already have replaced the fence. We did that on Monday or Tuesday, I forget. We've agreed to noise levels that we can control with music and being out of there and done by a certain time. The thing is, the leagues already run, we already have volleyball leagues. There's gonna be a couple hundred adults out there every day, every evening, from starting Monday until mid-October. What this does is allows us to have our own power box back there that the food trucks can plug into. Right now, the food trucks run off a generator. Generators sound like lawn mowers. Generators sound like... lawnmowers. When generators sound like lawnmowers, they turn the music up to drown out the lawnmower noise. So we've agreed, the box already exists. It just has to be turned on and that's part of the P U D that's here. What you need will turn it on once we've got that part done. So if we just have the food trucks, you know, will plug in and there's no generator noise, the music is kept at a very acceptable level for them. They wrote another letter that both Bill and Mary and I signed off on that said that we've come to the agreement. One of the other letters is from the residential property that's over there. I, there's, the stuff that was written in there, I don't have any idea. My, my number has been posted on a banner on the property for a little over a year. I've never received a phone call about complaint or anything, ever. That particular, whoever, I forget his name, talked about cars being broken into and underage drinking and whatever else. Everybody comes through their.
I, I think.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think probably part of the reason why it would be a good idea to get everybody together to do a meeting would be to sort out through some of those, I don't think we really have any thing to say about whether there's underage drinking carrying on. I think the ABLE Commission will take care of that. Are they operating legally as an outdoor lighted volleyball center without the outdoor entertainment and sports, whatever that they're asking for here?
Yes.
Are they operating legally currently as far as?
They're legally operating the volleyball under the current P U D.
So they can continue to do that while we sort out whatever it is we need to do?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there anybody else here today who wishes to be heard on this item? Commissioners? I stand by my recommendation that we take a couple of weeks.
Do you want a meeting? Were you going to suggest a me?
I, I think we need to take a continuance, have a meeting.
Is two weeks enough? Is that really enough?
Well, what I'd like to see is some hours of operation. It's just, you know, some of the things it sounds like that they've agreed to, placed into the P U D, so it's, it's clear. So Mr. Bullard has clear operating guidelines. Randy can advise his client as to, how to proceed on that. I think two weeks is enough, but I mean, that's up to, it's your case, Randy.
It's your word, so I mean, it's okay. It's enough for me.
You need more time, Scott? I'd like more time. I'm agreeable.
If they think they can get it done, I mean, so a couple of their questions that I have, I want to be clear what we need to do in two weeks. I mean, that's just fair to you, you guys. So what, what is the base zoning district that's being proposed for the S P U D?
Hold on.
I have an asterisk. I'm not sure what that means.
Yes, we have an asterisk in the staff report. There's not a, it doesn't tell us.
There's an asterisk where it says it shall be under the regulation of the base zoning district, but.
They left that blank. That's one of our T E's to base it under the R four district regulations.
Well, we're going to need an answer to that question before we vote.
I don't, R four?
R four.
Oh, sorry. And see, that's.
Wait, I mean, well, wait a minute, though. He doesn't own this property.
That's right.
He clearly has the authority to apply, though.
R four is the base of the current P U D. This mirrors, this mirrors.
So he can't, he can't, these guys probably cannot, don't have the authority to agree to change that zoning.
That's fair.
I, I would suggest.
Do they? Do they have the authority to change the zoning?
They have the authority to rezone this portion. But in, in working with them, we tried to keep it as close to the existing P U D as possible. And they both have an R four base.
I don't know what his lease says.
I don't either.
I mean, just, just, just if it were my client, I'd be going, well, did you, what does your lease say about your ability to rezone my property?
Well, and our staff has to satisfy themselves that they have that authority before they can seek rezoning, so.
He's just the applicant. I mean, it's not, it's not the staff's risk and it's not my risk.
I think the applicant is waiting to say, are you going to say something about? Yeah, I do have a letter signed by the owner of the property, saying that we do have the ability to apply for this.
Okay.
I can.
Like I said, it's not our risk.
So, all right, so I think that's something that we ought to review because we're not talking about anything that has anything to do with R four, and so I'm not sure that's appropriate. The other thing that concerns me is, I didn't understand, I've never seen this before, maybe this is my fault, but under your application, the sign says signs attached to your building supposedly should be limited to use unit. I don't think signage code, there's nothing in our ordinances that would create signage limits based on use units, right? So then it's going to fall back to the base owning district of R four.
Which may be beneficial.
I just think that we need to spend a little time with the, with the S P U D application too. Some of the other terms are unclear. I, I think there's a lot of stuff here to make this work. I think having a neighborhood meeting with these people and trying to coalesce around things that are legitimate complaints that maybe you are or are not aware of would be a really good idea. If you think you can do all that and come back in two weeks, that's up to you, but that sure seems like a lot to do in two weeks.
And to be fair, in order to get those changes into a staff report or into our packets, it really is only a week, so.
I'm not trying to bump you unnecessarily. I just don't want you to come back and be in the same position you are. That's, in my view, that's the worst thing we can do is, without being clear about what needs to be addressed before, is to send you off on a continuance and then you come back and we have to do it again, so.
I understand. I mean, I could meet with him Sunday evening.
Let's, let's.
So your options would be April 26 and then the next meeting would be May 10?
Our next meeting is April what?
26.
No.
No.
April 12.
12.
I'm so sorry, I missed April 12. April 12 is the next meeting, then the 26th, then May 10. Thank you.
I'm going to encourage you to take the 26th. I'm just, I'm going to go out on a limb and encourage you to take that. If it's not terribly detrimental to you, I think it would be wise.
I think that makes sense, frankly.
Okay, I mean, okay.
Okay. Anybody else who wants to be heard on this? We have, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to continue S P U D 1046 to the April 26, 2018 meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue item number 10, S P U D 1046 until the April 26th meeting. Could you cast your votes, please? It is continued.
The rest of the cases are continued or deferred indefinitely. And the last item on the agenda is a presentation. It's to introduce and set for adoption BikeWalk OKC. It's the city's pedestrian bicycle master plan. On your agenda, you'll see that we're asking to set for a public hearing on April 12. We would like you to consider amending that to April 26 because as we just closed our public comment period yesterday, we'd like adequate time to be able to go through and address those public comments. And our main planner, John Tankert, who's going to give the presentation, is on vacation during that week, so we would like to extend that to April 26. So John is going to give a brief introduction presentation to you. And I also wanted to mention in the audiences, Jeff Butler, our assistant planning director, and Lakisha Dunbar, who you haven't met yet. Lakisha replaces Matt Sandage. She is our transportation planner in the planning department, so she'll be working closely on all of our transportation initiatives with John. So Lakisha, you might raise your hand so they know who you are. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to John.
Thank you, commissioners, for having me. Most of you have heard this presentation before. This is a condensed version, just to introduce it and update you on some new developments that have occurred as a part of it. So just to recap, BikeWalk OKC is an implementation piece of the comprehensive plan, Plan OKC, which was adopted in the summer of 2015. It is also, as a document, it is meant to supersede and incorporate several past plans to kind of condense everything into one document, one resource. And those include the 97 Trails Master Plan, the 08 Bicycle Transportation Plan, the MAPS III Sidewalk Report, as well as the transportation components of the DDF. Public outreach has been an integral part to this plan from the beginning throughout the process, and we're going through it again right now as the plan wraps up. And so some of the, those public participation elements include a steering committee that we had that was composed of representatives from the public sector, private sector, nonprofits, all relevant organizations as well as individuals from the public, advocates for walking, biking, disability concerns as well. We conducted a resident survey that we received more than 1,700 results, which was fantastic. We've held numerous public meetings, whether those are steering committee meetings, meetings where we went out to the public at libraries around the city, and meetings that we've been having recently with stakeholders, people who have been reviewing our planned document as part of the public review draft. Actually, for the public review draft, we've, we've closed the, the comment period on that, and we received three, over 350 comments on the document itself. It was open for two weeks and people were actually able to leave, look through the document and leave comments on the pages in the locations where their comments were relevant. So we had more than 75 people participate in that and 360 comments, many of which will lead to some changes in the document that will be reflected in your upcoming staff report. So this map shows the results, the distribution of results from our survey. As you can see, those 700, 1,700-plus response, responses came from all areas of the city. Next slide. And some of the key findings from that was that largely the people who were surveyed were dissatisfied with the current state of facilities, how it feels to be a pedestrian or cyclist in the city, but they all, you know, a very significant portion of them felt that it was very important or at least somewhat important to address this. Some of the key reasons that people gave for not walking or cycling were related to automobile traffic and infrastructure. So whether that's behavior of motorists, the volume of traffic, or the lack of infrastructure or the condition of infrastructure. So all of that public outreach and much of the analysis we did led to some key goals. I'm just going to kind of go through really quickly. They're very straightforward. We want walking and biking to be safe in Oklahoma City. We want more people to be able to walk and bike for transportation and for it to be convenient. We want people to be able to get to the places that they need to go, that they want to go. And we want significant barriers to be removed. So whether that's something physical that's difficult to get across or something more abstract that, that hinders walking and biking in our city. Those goals led to some key initiatives, and I'm just going to talk about a couple of those. Yep. So the first one is about empowering residents to be a part of the, the decision-making process, and that's been very important. Without going to the public and getting that input from them, we wouldn't know how to prioritize across such a large city with such limited resources. And then we also, as I, as I stated before, barriers may or may not be physical barriers. There may be some ordinances or definitions that need to be updated to better, or, you know, provide legal protection to cyclists or pedestrians that, that may not exist presently. So now I'm going to quickly go through the bicycle and trail side of the plan. BikeWalk OKC is basically two plans, a bicycle plan and a pedestrian plan. They're very different. So this map just shows our existing conditions. We've got, with, this map is missing the Will Rogers Trail, which was just completed. That puts us right around 75 miles of multi-use path, which is very competitive with cities our size around the country. We've got 150-plus miles of on-street bike facilities, predominantly bicycle routes, which are assigned with sharrows. And this map represents the collection of, sure.
I said, I want to say.
That's correct. I said that it makes us, it's a competitive amount of trails with Denver or Minneapolis significantly more than Austin, Texas. Oh, we have more than 150 miles of on-street bicycle facilities?
150.
Correct.
8,800, I believe is the number?
Fair, we do.
John, are there any stats you don't know?
Try me.
I don't want to. I'm not going to go there, John.
Yeah, so this, this map represents the combination of what we, we dubbed component plans to, to kind of have some logic and larger-scale projects that come together to make a full network of the city. The first one I'm going to talk about is the Grand Boulevard Loop. You know, our plan is to complete the trail network that comprises roughly 80 to 90 percent of the Grand Boulevard Loop presently. There are some gaps that we'd like to fill. And that creates sort of a, you know, a perimeter on which people can ride their bike, they can, they can run. It could be recreational or transportation. And, you know, there are major destinations all along that, and, you know, that, that's just a benefit of, of good planning that occurred many, many decades ago. The second one is cross-town connections. That's what we're calling it. And this basically will nest itself in the, in the Grand Boulevard Loop. So you end up with this perimeter as well as these east-west, north-south connections. This in particular provides great access to a lot of urban amenities. You'll notice that within a quarter mile, there's more than 450 transit stops. It's a very significant addition that, that can help people with that first and last mile of getting to and from transit stops. Regional recreational trails. So this is our proposal to expand our, our multi-use trail network, really focusing on connecting to other municipalities in the region. So Edmund just built trails or is working on trails around Lake Arcadia. It'd be great if we can connect the Katy Trail, Deep Fort Creek connection all the way to Lake Arcadia. It just broadens our, our reach and increases the, you know, the range that people can travel on bicycle. In places of the city that are not well-suited for on-street facilities, whether that's, there's too much traffic, there's not enough room to widen a street or something like that, we're proposing neighborhood greenways, taking advantage of riparian corridors, places where there are creeks and, or rivers. These are often underutilized and maybe the only ways into those neighborhoods where you can have a continuous, safe bicycle facility.
Do you have any thoughts of finding trails in all places that you're going to be part of that, people maybe neighborhood? Is it connected to the, you know, where they all are, how it relates to the other areas?
I'm, I'm not aware of that. That's something we could, we could do some research into and see what we can glean from that.
Jared, when, when the city provides the lot and block information for the plaits once they're finalized, if there is a, a trail designated that's to be constructed in that, does that also show up in G I S?
I don't believe it's in there right now, but we, we would at least know by looking at construction plans for the subdivision that were submitted with the final plaits, where those would be. So it would take a little bit of effort, but we probably do have that information.
Yeah.
Do you have, do you actually, what do you know?
Certainly. One of the action items of the plan is, you know, we list several research topics that we'd like to, to do subsequent to the plan's adoption. I think we, that'd be a great addition to it. Next slide. And another major component plan of the bicycle plan is the idea of bicycle and pedestrian bridges, several of which have already been funded and garnered some attention. These are renderings of a proposed project on Northwest Expressway at Wilshire.
Do you have any thoughts?
Yes.
Do you have any thoughts on the, like, overall situation there?
That's correct.
Do you have any thoughts on that?
And that's, and that's been a, an intersection that we've received a lot of feedback from the Oklahoma Bicycle Society and other organizations who have difficulty crossing the Northwest Expressway there. Right. And then to kind of fill in the gaps around the city among And then to kind of fill in the gaps around the city among all these component plans, we've created a framework to help us identify the right facility for the right road, taking into account conditions that transportation and traffic engineering consider both traffic counts, existing curb-to-curb width, and traffic speeds. And this is just an example of that, of the network, the long-term, long-range network, and you'll notice the language there, Tier 1, Tier 2, and Tier 3 facilities. Those are associated with the amount of safety that we think is necessary to facilitate bicycling for all types of riders as sort of a minimum standard. Moving on to the pedestrian plan, the, so a little, this map really does a good job of kind of telling the history of sidewalks in Oklahoma City. So, in the center of the city, where we are right now, sidewalks were built, you know, along with all-new development, and then for about 40, 50-plus years, sidewalks stopped being a requirement for new development beyond this, can you go back? Beyond this circle, subdivisions have been required to have sidewalks as a part of their development, and so you can just kind of clearly see this doughnut of missing sidewalks. So, a big piece of this plan is going in and kind of filling in those gaps that exist. Next slide. In order to do that, we identified priority areas, pedestrian priority areas, around the sort of doughnut around the city, and we also prioritized access to parks, schools, public transit, and then, similar to the bicycle plan, came up with a, an approach to, for long-range planning to kind of fill in any gaps. Plan OKC gave us priorities to start with when we were determining where to build sidewalks. You know, I mentioned parks and schools. Number one is responsive population, so that's people who are most likely to walk, people who may not have access to an automobile, maybe have disabilities, maybe young, maybe elderly, several different demographic groups that, you know, we have data through the census, and we can start to be more strategic in where we locate our facilities. We want to capitalize on existing facilities, and we want to kind of tie neighborhoods and urban commercial districts together, improving both as much as possible with pedestrian infrastructure. So, pedestrian priority areas, you can hit the, you know, the goal of that is to create walkable areas that connect people to their daily needs. It's pretty straightforward. It's looking at the major corridors that run through the priority areas and putting sidewalks on those first. Those are largely transit corridors as it is, and transit riders or pedestrians before and after they get on the bus. And, you know, then, subsequent to that, going into the neighborhoods and creating a sidewalk network to bring people from those neighborhoods to those commercial areas. Downtown, I didn't realize there was animation. So, the goal for downtown is to make downtown a more accessible place to visit, work, shop, and live. You know, with all the work that's been done with Project 180 and MAPS 3, this is just looking at what's left to do in terms of making sure it's an accessible, you know, sufficiently urban environment, you know, where people feel comfortable walking and choosing to walk. Access to transit, so this is a big one, obviously, and we want to make sure that the pedestrian component of public transit is convenient, safe, and dignified. So, we worked with Embark and gathered a lot of data on the transit stops that do exist, their ridership, and then we processed those stops to determine how close, or which ones are closest to the highest number of land uses that might generate pedestrian activity, and so we prioritized that. Sidewalks are actually going in right now. Embark is working with Public Works to connect transit stops to some key locations, so we were seeking to continue that momentum. Access to schools is obviously very important, and we want to create a safer environment for children and families to walk to neighborhood schools. So, it's not just about getting kids to school in the morning and back in the evening, but the communities that surround the schools, ensuring that they have access to facilities like gyms, tracks. If the schools are, you know, working with their community to allow them to use those facilities, we want to facilitate that. And this just shows an example of some of the work. We've been working with students from the University of Central Oklahoma to go out and assess the pedestrian infrastructure around parks and schools in anticipation of funding becoming available, so that we can know exactly what's missing in terms of ADA ramps, crosswalks, traffic control devices. So, this just kind of, we did the same thing for parks, and you'll see a similar map. There we are. So, physical activity, destinations are very important. When I was hired, I was hired under a CDC grant, and public health has been kind of interwoven into my, my job since I've been here, and so this was a great opportunity to think about how we can strategically improve people's access to physical activity. And then the citywide approach, we took a number of criteria in each of these three categories. I mentioned demographics, the types of people who are more predisposed to be pedestrians, but we also looked at all the data we have on existing pedestrian infrastructure in the field, as well as land uses that generate pedestrian activity, and that led to this heat map that not only helped us during our planning phase, but kind of lets us know what the next areas of priority will be, and gives us a platform for when the plan is updated in the future to recreate that process and see where the new priority areas are. The good news is that voters approved a significant amount of funding in September through the GeoBond and the sales tax. The sales tax in particular, three tenths of a cent, is going toward active transportation projects, and there's a committee put together that, you know, is there to represent each ward. So, we, this plan couldn't be getting adopted at a much better time. You know, it will help provide guidance and allow for a more transparent process that people can interact with their representatives and the plan, and know how their money is actually being spent and where it's being spent. So, with that, I'm happy to take any questions. The students that we work with actually inquire with the schools to find out, so we're kind of trying to document that as well. There was some legislation passed about joint use agreements in recent years that addresses some of the liability concerns that principals often have with allowing the public to use their facilities. So, it's not a, it's not a hard and fast rule, but it's something that a lot of public health professionals are really kind of pushing for because, you know, schools often have some of the better facilities where people can go and be physically active.
I just wanted to mention that the cover photo here is so terrific. Does anybody know whose child that is? It's our own Sarah Welch's little boy Milo, who actually does bike to school and bike all around downtown, even with his little brother Eli, and this picture is great because this kid really does do that, and this planner that works in our office feels safe letting her little boy do that.
Though if you look as, in the far distance, you can see her keeping an eye on her.
Keeping a watchful eye.
Actually, this suggests a question to me. When I was coming...
I was coming up Walker from Sheridan and about to turn right onto Call Core Drive, and I, as I was crossing this little green space here, it suddenly occurred to me that I don't really know whose responsibility it is to be, you know, mine or the bicyclist's. I'm turning across their lane, even as I'm turning right there. Who's supposed to be, I mean, I try always to notice, but...
Well, as far as I know, we do not have specific ordinances that define that. My recommendation is pull out in front of the green and turn around it, just so that any risks are minimized.
Okay.
I also wanted to mention, I, somebody was hiding in my line of sight here that I should have mentioned at the beginning, which is Max Harris, and Max's been working in our department now for about a year, right, Max?
Two.
Two years now. Wow, time flies, but Max has been helping John and put together this plan. He also does case mapping for you, so you didn't know who was behind that, and that's Max right there.
Hi, Max. Thank you, and thank you for the, not just presentation, but all the work.
Yeah, I just want to add, I went to the study session where you presented this to us in more depth, and I'm, I was riding my bike with my daughter and realized that probably you and your department and your team were responsible for that path. I'm guessing it's not the most thanked-a-job-in-the-world, but I was super impressed with your presentation. I really appreciate all the work that you guys have done on this, so pretty impressive stuff.
Thank you.
We would like to set this for a public hearing on April 26th, and as John mentioned, we've received lots of great input and feedback from the public in the public review and comment period. Some of the recommendations that came out of that were fabulous. These were the, this is the reason why we asked the public to give us feedback, because our citizens and residents know our city like we do not, in places that we do not, and they gave us some great additions. So, when we come back to set it for adoption, we will outline all of those areas where we've added some additional, you know, information or made changes to the plan, and go through that with you at that time. I don't think that it's anything incredibly, it doesn't change any of the intent of the plan, it actually just enhances and adds to it.
Well, I'll tell you, as the mother of a son who likes to bicycle all over the city, I really, really appreciate the efforts that you all are making and have made and will continue to make, just to make that process safer.
Okay, thank you.
I haven't been on a bicycle myself since I was about 12, but, you know, my kids bicycle everywhere, so...
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
Can I make that motion?
You have to amend what's on the agenda?
I amend what's on the agenda to introduce and set for public hearing for April 26th instead of the 12th.
So, we're making, I need a motion to amend the agenda from April 12th to April 26th.
Submit. Second.
I have a motion to second to amend the agenda on item number 16, from April 12th to April 26th. Cast your votes, please. It is so amended, and now I need a motion.
Motion.
To approve.
To approve.
The item.
Heard you said it.
To set it for hearing, introduce and set for adoption.
I agree.
I have a motion to second to introduce and set for adoption on April 26th, the BikeWalk OKC Plan, Master Plan. Cast your votes, please. So approved.
Thank you. See you guys in a few weeks.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Let me see where I am here. Additional items, which is, I don't even know what that means, really. Communications and reports, planning commission committees, we don't even have any at the moment. Planning commission members, anybody have anything they want to say? No, speak now, if ever hold your peace. Planning department? No. Development services department? No, everybody's quiet today. Useful counselor's office. Citizens to be heard. I have somebody signed up. Susan McCann, did you come back to us?
This, Ari O's coming up, that's all right.
Sure. Come forward, please. Give us your name and address for the record.
Ari O Elizondo, E-A-R-I-O. Elizondo, E-L-I-Z-O-N-D-O. Address 1146 Greystone Avenue, Oklahoma City. So, this is with regards to a, an application for a special permit for an ICE facility in Ward 3. The application was withdrawn, and my question was, when is a special permit required? When is the owners of, of the real estate, they're built, they're demolishing, demolishing to show a structure right now that will be used as a facility later on without a special permit? So, my question is, the code requires it, but when, first of all, when must it be granted
Special permit application that was withdrawn after they determined that they didn't really need a special permit. Do you know on what basis that decision was made?
Which, which application?
It's for the ICE, the ICE detention.
SP504.
Yes, this was an existing facility that was merely relocating from one location in the city to another. They were permitted previously, same operation, they're just moving the facility to another location. Special permit wasn't required before, when they initially located here. It was determined that the facility, there's only a small portion of the facility is a holding facility. They don't detain anyone overnight. It's merely for interviews. If a person needs to be detained, they are taken to a detention facility designed for that purpose.
So, did you say that the facility from which it is moving did not need a special permit?
No.
Initially, and is that just because of change in the code, or is, does it have to do with its operation? It didn't come under the...
It's mainly on its operation. It's a large area of offices, professional offices, and a small area that is used for interviewing.
Did that answer your question?
No, because the facility where it stands right now is an I-2 zoning, which specifically requires special permitting for forced detention facilities, which this, which he just conceded, this facility would, a portion of it, be forced detention, so that would require a special permit.
I'm sorry, I thought he said that it is not a detention facility.
No. If you look at even their own application, it says that, and the staff report, which I have...
Which we don't have.
No.
It is, it is not.
This is not, a specific case is not on the agenda, so I don't think we want to get into the specific case. If you have a general question as to when a special permit is required, then I think we can talk about that, but...
Are there limits on our ability to hear items that are not publicly noticed?
Then I'll restate my question, which is, when will this ICE facility require the special permit to be granted or applied for?
So, I don't know, we can answer that question with respect to a specific facility?
Okay.
It's not a special permit use, so it, it won't.
So, where, then my follow-up question is, where do I challenge that determination that the special use is not required?
Either with the Board of Adjustment. File an appeal with the Board of Adjustment.
The, the decision that it's not, doesn't require that would be an administrative decision, and so the appeal from that administrative decision is to the Board of Adjustment.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Other business?
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion to second to adjourn. Cast your votes, please. We are adjourned.